According to my computer here, it is four o'clock. So Jeremy, I think we're ready to begin.
Is Linda joining us?
I sure hope so.
She is right now. She's joining in.
Okay, she is. So let me call this May 28th, meeting of the Congress. To order. We'll note that it is being recorded. The first item on our agenda this evening is the town manager update. Mr. Town Manager.
Hi, good evening. You're having a brief comment about my band-aid. I actually, I'm in the office and there are some of my coworkers here. And I'm trying to, you know, practice what we've been preaching. And so even though I am more than six feet away from them, if they come near, for whatever reason, I can just put it up over my nose and mouth, which is the kind of message we've been trying to get out to people. So I hope, hopefully, I hope I can, the modeling of good behavior will hopefully be helpful. So very briefly tonight, a lot of, since the last time we spoke, we have spent a significant amount of time planning for our eventual reopening. And unfortunately, I don't have a lot of specific announcements to make in terms of dates or strategies or anything else. Our reopen task force that we put together has been doing excellent work. We did an employee survey to kind of assess where people's concerns are and where we need to focus these. We got over 180 responses, including, you know, 90-plus comments for some of the questions individually. So it was a very strong response by employees and they really offered a lot of thoughtful feedback. Now, we got that back Wednesday evening, so we're still, there were a lot of comments, but we're still sifting through. And I mean, a lot of things kind of focusing on areas of concern. High-touch surfaces, you know, restrooms, things like that, that we are strategizing on, you know, kind of as we speak. And we know we need to figure out before we can reopen. Obviously, you know, reopening safely is what we're, is the goal, not just reopening. So I hope to have more specifics for all of you next week. But I just want to commend our employees for really taking the survey seriously and being very honest with their feedback. It's definitely going to help shape the choices we make. Are there any questions about town offices reopening? And I think I want to remind folks that this reopening for employees, which is going to, which in the short term, or when I say short term, which for the coming months will still include, I think, some split shifts and things like that. Reopening to the public is an area that we really haven't started to figure out because if we can't figure out how to do it safely for employees, we can't move into that next phase. So any questions about that aspect of the reopening?
I guess I had a question about plans for any camps or summer camps this summer. I know various people have been asking me that.
Excellent segue. So first, the summer camps, the direct department's working daily along with our HR department to go through all of the necessary steps to open the summer camps. Summer camps themselves are a part of the governor's Phase Two, which we haven't entered into yet. But, and to be quite honest, the guidance that's going to guide how camps are going to look hasn't been sent out by the state that I'm aware of. I see Dr. Hunter shaking her head as well. We've been looking for it, but it hasn't been issued yet. So we're going through and, you know, doing the screening process for camp counselors, lifeguards, things like that. So we're ready to kind of hit a button and open the camps. So all of that work is happening now. We're not waiting to get guidance to do the background stuff. But we are still waiting for, we could actually figure out how much, how much space we need and all those other things. So the mission right now is to have, to offer summer camps this summer. We know it's important for people to have some place for their kids to kind of get outside and structure activities, but also potentially allow them to go back to work as well if their offices are reopening. Similarly, White Pond, you know, White Pond has been kind of unofficially opened. The 20th, we are, like I said, we're in the process of staffing up for that. You know, the bathroom trailer and things like that need to be delivered. And so we are targeting that. It, right now, it is use and swim at your own risk. So we want people to be mindful of that. And process is already started. One of the things that we've gotten, we've observed and received some reports on is some congregating. And I haven't observed it for, but I have been, received reports that there have been some groups that have been congregating on White Pond that have created some social distancing concerns. And we've also got reports that, you know, that these, the groups that are congregating are generating some, quite a bit of trash. And so I want to remind folks that because it is currently really unmanaged or unstaffed, it's carry-in, carry-out. So if you bring in things with you, make sure you carry them back out and just kind of be respectful of the space and the neighbors around it. So that's, so that's on White Pond. And I do believe that the, I know Terry, I think you raised it last week, the MMN has processed and posted the candidate's forum. So it should be on the MMN YouTube channel now. So that's pretty much it for me. Any questions?
Even other than just a lot of logistical work to think through and get squared away, is there, is there a real impediment stirring in the face of reopening for employees?
Um, you know, the way I read it, and we had this conversation this morning on our, at our task force meeting, part of the reopening thing that at least I've assessed is people need to assess their own individual risks in terms of, you know, coming back to work or being in contact with others. And they also have to kind of take an honest look at what other probabilities. You know, I think we've seen surface contact probabilities have been lowered quite a bit by the CDC guidance. So that, our focus on that area has shifted. I think we don't, you know, we definitely need to be wiping down high-touch services regularly, but, you know, doing a massive decontamination or, you know, sanitization of each building, you know, four times a week, we don't think is maybe as necessary as we thought it was before the CDC's new guidance on surface contact, which is great because we were really concerned about our ability to resource up because every other building, public or private, is, is going to be looking for the same sets of materials and services. And so that being scaled back a little bit is helpful. No, I think it's more just feelings, making sure people feel secure coming back to the office and making sure we have the tools at our disposal to manage the issue and address those concerns to the greatest extent possible. There really is no guarantee of 100% safety, as we know, because of the spread, because people who don't really have the virus can spread it. But, you know, we have a lot of solutions for a lot of issues. It's more making sure that we communicate that to the workforce. And honestly, and the community, including the business community. I mean, I haven't, I did neglect to mention that we did have a conversation with the Economic Vitality Committee as well this week. And we're, we spent, we are part of a regional grant proposal for funding from CDBG that will be available to local businesses. We continue to look at what local resources we can bring to bear to help the business community. I know that the idea was mentioned about possibly expanding offerings for outdoor seating, which would involve, of course, parking, you know, what we need to, what we need to temporarily allow for lifting parking restrictions. Is there an alcohol licensing issue or a food inspection issue? So these are things we're actively figuring out. So we, you know, we hope we can, we can allow or we can offer businesses this opportunity. So these are, like I said, a million conversations, just no, no plans concretely yet. Oh, and I should mention one, speaking of plans, we are moving forward with a, I think I mentioned, maybe I didn't mention this in the past, the renovation of townhouse first floor. It's a project that had been funded, I think, a few years ago. And the primary goal of it was creating separations between the treasurer collectors and clerks' offices and patrons, mostly because there's a lot of financial transactions that happen at the counter. Obviously, COVID-19 has painted that in even much more necessary light. And so we are moving ahead with that. And so it's likely that depending on the bid schedule, it's possible that those offices will be relocated to different locations as a part of our reopening.
Good. Are there any other questions for the town manager?
Stephen, I think at least part of the town today received a notice about the upcoming town election. And I'm wondering if you want to comment on the correction for that, that's needed for that flyer, or do you want to?
I, I, I haven't seen that.
Okay. On the website, I think it's been posted by the town clerk's office that the residents have until June 10th to register to vote because the election is June 11th. And the flyer erroneously says June 1st. So the correction's been, the correction's been made on the homepage of the website, but I think people need to be aware of that.
All right.
Thank you, Austin. Flyer out. I think I got a, I got a flyer in the mail today.
Did it say June 1st?
Says June 1st instead of June 10th.
Oh geez. Okay. I'll, I'll look into that. Thank you.
Carrie?
Well, before you vote though, if you're going to vote absentee or whatever, you have to first send in some requests for it. And maybe that's the June 1st date.
And then the application for the request is on the back of this flyer, so people can access that?
Okay. Also, I had a question about Stephen, your last item about renovating the townhouse. That's good news that we can move ahead on that. Is that going to include an item that we had been talking about previously, which would be a carpet up in that hearing room for noise?
Yeah, actually, we ordered some large kind of area rugs. In fact, I think they're sitting folded up in the hallway right at the door here. I don't know that they've been put down yet. I think we're going to wait to see what was going to happen. And it's possible that those meeting rooms won't be available during construction because of dust and noise and everything else. It's going to be a pretty impactful project. So we may, and, well, first of all, I think we're going to continue to meet remotely based on the governor's guidelines for quite a while. But we may have to, we may, those rooms may not be available. This is a part of the planning process. Just to give you, so, and in fact, as, when I got here today, there were engineers kind of walking around taking pictures, doing measurements. So they are going to prepare our cost estimate in advance of completed design and going up to bid and making sure that we are on budget. But I don't know that we'll be back in this, in this building doing regular business, especially if we, if we get favorable bids and are able to go forward. But we do, but we do have, but we do have rugs, area rugs for that room, for whenever that day comes.
So you mean, you're planning that we're never going to be back there? We'll have a whole different meeting room? Or you're saying the COVID-19 is going to go on for who knows how long? And once that's over, then you'll put the rugs down and we'll have meetings there?
Once that's over, and if it, like I said, if we're able to proceed with that first floor renovation, we haven't, we really need to have a contractor on board to talk to them about what it's going to take to keep the second floor open during the process. And if it's something that can be done fairly easily, then we could continue to have town, like my office, for example, could continue to function and be open in the meeting room. We just, you know, pay, I'll use the Cambridge Turnpike as the cautionary tale of trying to keep something open while you're doing really disruptive work around it. We don't want to, we want to kind of avoid that circumstance. So unknown as of yet, but those are things we are, we're trying to plan for.
So Stephen, when do you think you'll know and be able to, you know, report on where the town, where the clerk's office, where everybody's going to be operating from for those who have to be on site?
I would be, I'd say probably a number of weeks. The design, I think, is a few weeks away, cost estimate, and then, you know, we'd have some bid time. So between now and then, we would, we would figure that out. I mean, we have some options, you know, ranging from, you know, there are certain programs that may not come back in a timely fashion. You know, Church Street may be an option. You know, we have some vacant spaces. So we, we're looking at what our, what our availability is for that. I think one of the things we would certainly want to do as best as possible is keep the Dropbox available here at the townhouse. So people who are used to coming here and dropping their payment or whatever off can still do that. And then we would just collect it, you know, and then take it back to wherever we were processing payments and things like that. We, one of the things we're trying to, one of the things to reduce costs, we're trying to limit the amount of office space we would need to, like, often, like, if the, we did an analysis of what we have available for town facilities before COVID-19. And we're looking at some options for rental leasing space, and it was expensive, obviously. This has kind of shown us that we can do quite a bit of telework. And so we don't necessarily need the same number of offices for the employees that are here today. And so that's one of the considerations that's really been an evolving thing since early March.
Right. Any other questions for the town manager? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is the 1/12 spending plan for the town. Is Carrie going to be presenting?
I'm here, Stephen. You want me to take, do you have any introductory comments?
No, just to say that Carrie and her team have done a really good job doing this. And I, I think we're confident that we have a plan that is ready to go and keep, keep the proverbial trains running on time.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I have just two slides to show you. Okay, so the, just to, just to give you an idea of how the 1/12th works, I've put this first slide together. So this is authorized under Chapter 53, Section 5 of the Acts of '20. So recently, just approved by the legislature and signed by the governor. It is referred to as deficit spending because there's been no appropriation by town meeting. So it has nothing to do with the fact of whether or not the town has the funding because we obviously have the funding. We're not going to be borrowing, using cash or anything like that. But it is referred to as deficit spending because there's no offsetting appropriation. This is a way to provide municipalities the ability to continue certain operations past June 30, 2020, absent an approved fiscal 21 budget. It does require the development of a monthly expenditure plan that needs to be presented to the select board and approved by the select board and submitted to the Division of Local Services and approved by the Director of the Bureau of Local Accounts for final approval. And it is anticipated that you're submitting one month at a time. Now, we have been talking about not, potentially not having annual town meeting until September. So we've put a plan together for July, August, and September. But the, the department is expecting that you're submitting one month at a time because once you have town meeting, the authorization you have under this legislation is extinguished. So there are certain things that you include and certain things that you exclude. So you include funding for those for each month, for any expenditures that require town meeting appropriation. So the general budgets, the revolving funds that need to receive town meeting appropriation based on how they're authorized, enterprise funds and certain other special revenue funds. You also include assessments, the Concord-Carlyle Regional District Assessment, the Minuteman-Votec Assessment, Pension Assessment, fixed costs typically for employee benefits and debt service. You exclude expenditures that don't require town meeting appropriation. And this is a bit confusing because we have, we have several enterprise funds, only one of which is actually authorized under the Enterprise Fund section of Mass. General Law. The others are actually under a revolving fund statute that does not require specific town meeting appropriation. So we're not going to include the expenditures of the light plant, the water sewer, solid waste enterprise funds, or the recreation fund. We're also not including capital or the Community Preservation Act projects or any other items that would require special purpose appropriation. So anything that's new for fiscal 21, for instance, we're not going to include 1/12th of the, of the funding we're anticipating for affordable housing because that needs to be approved by town meeting. We're also not going to include any salary increases unless they have already been authorized through an approved collective bargaining agreement. So we do, I believe we have one unit that has an agreement that extends into fiscal 21. So we've taken those salary increases into account. But we've excluded any contracts that are expiring June 30, 2020, and also any adjustments for non-union staff. The process is that, once this is approved by the town, it's submitted to the state electronically through their gateway system. Once it's approved, we can't exceed any expenditure allowance any month. And again, as I mentioned, once it's, the approval terminates after we have town meeting and a budget has been adopted. So, let's see. All right. So here, here is the plan that we have put together. And as I mentioned to you before, typically, for most departments, we're really just looking at 1/12th of their, their current year spending because, you know, 60 to 70% of a department's budget is salary. That's, that's fixed. So we've included 1/12th there. Some of, some of the other items that have been included, because you can see up here, I'm not sure if you're able to see my, my cursor. This section here is for the town budgets, $47 million appropriation. And we've got, we've got varying amounts each month. So in July, the things that we've added above 1/12th would be for any debt service that's due in July. We are planning to pay 100% of our property liability, workers' comp insurance premiums because we take a discount for paying those upfront. And they're fairly small dollar amounts, but we don't want to lose out on those discounts. But we have only included 1/12th of our retirement assessment, for instance. We typically pay that upfront, and the retirement board does give us a discount for doing so. They have agreed this year, in recognition of what is, what is happening, that they would allow a monthly payment for July, August, and September. And then we would make 100% of the payment in October, assuming town meeting is in September. So we've done the same for August and September here. In August, we don't have those amounts that we pay 100% upfront. We also don't have a lot of debt service in August. We get into September, and September, we do have a huge debt service payments associated with the school project. So that, that's why you see the fluctuations there. So August is typically, is very representative of really what our fixed costs are on a monthly basis, so about $3 million. And then we have the increases for debt service. For Concord Public Schools, I've just, this really is a placeholder, and I would need to confirm with Jared Stanton and Dr. Hunter, who I know are both on the call, to make sure what they would like to have included because we're, we're going to submit one package. We're not, we're not going to submit or have multiple submissions for each of our appropriations. We'll have one for the town of Concord. I am using the fiscal, I did take 1/3 of the fiscal 21 amount. Now, the legislation says that, that it's at least 1/12th of fiscal 20. I have, I have plugged in the fiscal 21 amounts, and typically, I'm taking 1/12th of fiscal 21 to give a little bit of extra flexibility. So we have these four small revolving funds. And we've just put them in at 1/12th. BD, again, this, for BD is the fiscal 21 proposed budget. The same thing for, for PEG access and cable-related funds. And then our two educational assessments, Minuteman and CCRSD. Again, I've, I've included the fiscal 21 amounts because they, they will have increases. They, they will also have fixed costs that they will need to expend, and they will need to expend them at their fiscal 21 rate. So that's what we've plugged in. So we're looking in July at an expenditure of $10,153,743. And then again, August and September. I'd like to answer any questions.
Other questions from the board? I have two quick questions. One, is there guidance on detail, Carrie? Is it sufficient just to list the 4, 2, or 6 million for the town appropriation without any detail? That's one question. The second question is, if, if we don't spend an approved amount of money in a particular month, does it roll forward or is it just lapsed back into the general revenue fund?
Okay, so with regard to the first question, we have not yet seen the form that we have to submit to the Bureau of Local Accounts. We, we understand that that will be available June 1st. So we don't yet know the level of detail that is required. I can tell you that I put, what I put up was just, just to, really to fit on one screen. We do have a level of detail by line item appropriation at town meeting. And so our assumption, our working assumption, is that they would like to see that level of detail by town meeting line item appropriation. And I do have that. It just, I just did not put that up.
Thank you.
And the second question, the way that I, I read the information that's available, I don't believe that anything that is left over at the end of the month would be carried forward unless, when you submitted the next month, you did that. I don't, I don't believe it's going to automatically carry forward. And with the timing, I'm not sure that, that we would necessarily be able to project what we would have left at the month in time to submit for the, for the next month.
Got it. Thank you. Does the board have any additional questions for Carrie?
So Carrie?
Go ahead, Linda.
Carrie, can you just remind, when, when is this due from you?
So we are able to submit anytime after June 1st.
Okay.
I think we would like to be, we would like to submit as soon as possible just because we, there are 351 cities and towns, and I assume a good number of them will be submitting. So we want to make sure that we get this in the queue and, and approved before the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
So shall, shall we plan on having this come back to us at our meeting that's probably going to be on the 4th for the approval as necessary before you're transmitted? Or shall we wait for a few days and find out if you get the kind of guidance you need?
I, I think the 4th would be fine. Hopefully, we will know the, the exact format that it needs to be submitted in, and that would also then give us time to, to just circle back with CPS to make sure we have the, the exact amount that they have included.
Jeremy, I know you're on the call, so if you could just make a note to get that on our agenda for the 4th, I'd appreciate it. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Carrie.
Mike?
Carmen?
If, if I might, I, I believe that it is a requirement under the statute that town meeting- that town meeting actually be recessed and continued until a date after June 30, before the town can submit this budget request for deficit spending. But let's just make a note to check on that, because you and I will need to coordinate on that, Carrie, in, in order to make that work, if that's a requirement.
I, I believe that is a requirement, and. Yeah.
So I know Carmen, you're on the agenda for later. I'm going to pick that back up again, vis a vis timing, when we get to your.
Certainly.
Town, town meeting update. Seeing no other, any additional questions? I don't see any. All right, the next item on our agenda is the 1/12 spending plan for Concord Carlisle Regional High School. Dr. Hunter or Jared, I don't know who's going to take the lead here.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I'll open it up, and then Jared will chime in with the details. Our process is a little different. We work directly with DESI on the regional 1/12 approval. So we're here for a slightly different purpose, because we'll be working with the school committee on the spending plan itself. The premises are all the same, in that we're working off of a, you know, one-twelfth monthly allocation. We need to bring to you a discussion of the method, assessment method that we submit to the Commissioner's office. Our plan, we do have the forms available, and our plan is actually due June 1st. And so we needed to talk that through with you and get your support on, really, it's a reinforcing support on the fact that we use the method to determine the assessments that's in the regional agreement, which is not the statutory method outlined by the state. And Jared can explain all that far better than I can. So it's a little different slant on all of this 1/12 piece, and I'll let Jared take it from there.
Before I ask Jared, though, you mentioned a June 1 deadline, Laura. Does that mean you need us to take action tonight?
We, Jared can explain. There's a choice of being willing to write a letter of support in using the assessment method that we've always used, or you can take a vote. So yes, the hope would be you could offer us one of those two tonight.
All right, thank you, Jared.
So, so I'll explain. I'm not sure, hi, everybody. I'm not sure if you saw my memo last week outlining what we need to do at the region to get a budget for next year. Since we know that the Concord Town Meeting is not going to be until the fall, regardless of what happens in Carlisle, we will not have a agreed-upon noted budget. So therefore, we have to apply for a 1/12 budget with the Commissioner of Education by June 1st. They just sent out the form on Monday, maybe Tuesday, although we didn't know the steps that we needed to take. Many of the steps are just giving them FY20 information, giving them, school committee proposed FY21 information, steps taken for town meetings, et cetera. The only other thing that needs to happen is a letter from, of support from both the Carlisle and the Concord Select Board regarding using the alternative method that is in our 1957 regional agreements. So all it is, is basically a letter of support that the Commissioner can go ahead and use the alternative method instead of the statutory method. The statutory method uses minimum local contribution in the numbers. That we do not do that. They take that piece off and assess the rest. We do it currently is basically, everything is by the enrollment of October 1st, that prior year, and everything is split by that enrollment amount. So basically, we just need a letter of support to use the alternative method. And what will happen is, if that was not the case, the Commissioner will go ahead and use the statutory method for the, that we are not, that we do not have a budget. But once we do have an agreed-upon budget by the towns, we'll go back to the alternative assessment formula, and you'll still be assessed that the amount that you would have, regardless of the Commissioner using statutory method or not for the first three or four months until we had a budget. So we were in Carlisle on the 26th, two days ago, and they did vote that. And they just sent me a letter from the town manager saying that we agree with the regional agreement to use the alternative method for the assessment. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So essentially, you need from us a motion to authorize the chair to write a letter of support for your use of the alternative assessment method. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, are there questions from the board? I see none. I would entertain such a motion.
I move to authorize the chair to submit a letter of support to the, for the, to use the alternative method according to the regional school district for calculating the 1/12 spending plan for the Concord Carlisle Regional School.
Second, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note that it passes unanimously, Jared. I'll be into you, and we'll get a draft done, and we'll.
Wonderful, and I can send you over a draft if you'd like as well to help out.
That'd be helpful. And if you'll copy Jeremy on it too, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the appointment of town council. I don't think this needs any introduction. The town council bylaw requires that we, in the month of May, appoint a council. And I don't know if there's any comment or question. Our intention is to reappoint Mina Macarios of Anderson Krieger. And before I ask for a motion, I'd, I want to know if anyone has any comments or feedback that they would like to supply to Mr. Macarios or Anderson Krieger about their representation of the shares. So support first, Stephen, and then we'll get to you. I see none from the board. I see Jane's hand, please, Jane.
I just wanted to thank Mina. He has been very consistent and impressive in his analysis, certainly during my tenure so far.
Thank you. I would echo that, and I would say he's been most, most attentive, always responsible, always thoughtful. And I particularly, I think all of you are at a town meeting and know how important his contributions are to the affairs at town meeting. He's always able to respond in a forthright manner, and I think that's very, very helpful. And speak of counsel, there he is. Mina, we're just talking about you, and you're muted. You're muted.
I'm sorry to be late. It's, it's very easy to over-schedule yourself when you don't have travel time in between. That's what I'm learning.
Well, we were just discussing, and Jane had weighed in with her statement of how supportive you have been and how much your council has meant to the board. I did the same thing, and particularly called out your contributions to town meeting, which I think are very helpful, not only to the board, but to the citizens of the town as they think about various warrant articles that come before us. Stephen, you wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, it seems like a million years ago, but I, the board had asked that I do an analysis of the town council bylaw on the issue of a individual attorney versus a firm. And I did complete that analysis. I don't know if it gets circulated. I, I had completed it in draft form, and I'm happy to finalize that. We can send out the next packet. But my analysis of it, I, I looked at both the charter and the bylaw, and my conclusion was there wasn't, there really isn't a violation in the town council bylaw, either in spirit or in, or by letter. The, the bylaw really is silent on whether or not other people in a firm can be, can represent the town. I can tell you that in practice, that's ubiquitous. In every municipality I've worked for, everyone I've ever heard of, like even in the cities I've worked in that had a city attorney that was in-house, they still had a law department that had other attorneys with different specialties. You know, and so I think it should be clear to, to the board that any, any question about the compliance with the bylaw should be put to rest. There's definitely compliance, and I think I would echo Jane and Mike's sentiment. I've worked with a number of municipal attorneys, and Mina specifically, but Anderson Krieger is a firm that really, really set, set the bar for me in terms of responsiveness. When you need fast information to get it too fast, when you need something more thoughtful, they take their time, and comprehensive answers, especially on complex issues. So I, I fully endorse the reappointment of Mina as town council.
Thank you. Are there any other comments by the board? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move the reappointment of Mina Macarios of Anderson and Krieger LLP as town council, with the term beginning June 1, 2020, to expire May 31, 2021.
To a second.
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
It passes unanimously. Mina, thank you very much for your service, and we look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. And while I'm here, I'm happy to answer any questions or anything else. But if you need to move on to your next agenda item, I'm also happy to give you that time.
I think we will move on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mina.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the aforementioned town meeting update. Madam Town Moderator.
Greetings, all. I have issued a second declaration, recessing and continuing town meeting this time to June 29, 2020. I have made the time, two hours earlier than we typically convene town meeting, 5:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM. And the reason for that is to take advantage of daylight hours in the event that we determine that it is more advisable and protective of public health to hold the meeting outdoors. That said, the situation with respect to COVID-19, and in particular with respect to those in the highest risk group of over sixty-five years of age, and those with other underlying conditions that render them more susceptible. The advisory is still in place for those folks to remain at home and leave the house only for essential errands. It, it's very uncertain when that would be lifted. New York Times reported today on scientific studies that suggest we're a very long distance from herd immunity, which is what we really need in order to be sure that we are no longer at risk of a sudden spike in community spread, which can happen in a large gathering, even with only one or two positive cases in the group. I recently saw a study in the New England Journal of Medicine. It was a case study just on the spread of the virus in one or two fairly short gatherings at a church in Arkansas, where the out, there was a substantial outbreak, not only within the church, but in the surrounding community that was traceable back to two individuals who attended a church service. And while those folks were not masked, they were seated in a socially distant manner. So the risk remains. So that said, I have to report to you that there are a number of towns that are intending to proceed with their town meetings. And Carlisle, for example, is intending to proceed with its town meeting outdoors in June on a Saturday during daylight hours. I know that Bedford is intending to proceed with its town meeting outdoors on the football field toward the end of June. North Andover also is proceeding with its town meeting late in June, also outdoors. There are some smaller towns that are still, right now, discussing holding their town meetings in a week or two indoors in gymnasiums in a socially distant manner. I think it will be interesting to all of us to see how these experiments proceed. And that will be important data for us as we decide what we will do with our own town meeting. So right now, we're at June 29th. I know that the preference of the Select Board, the Finance Committee and the School Committee, has been to push this. And I think, Stephen, if I'm correct, also of town staff, to push the meeting out further, if we possibly can. And I certainly think that the public health issues are going to remain for a while, and that the public health issues certainly justify a postponement of the meeting. So I, in order to make sure that the town is able to submit its 1/12 budget as early as possible in June to the Department of Revenue, I would need to issue a third declaration to recess and continue the meeting sometime in the next week, I suppose. It is following rather quickly on the last declaration, but I, I think that that's probably going to be understandable and certainly justified under the statute. And I think it's understandable under the, under the circumstances. So if that's what Carrie would like to do, and then what the town would like to do in order to have things proceed in orderly manner to get the approval for the budgeting, I'm happy to cooperate that, with that, because I, I do see that the justification is there to postpone the meeting further.
Karen?
I, I, I had a question, which is something that's become paramount in this house. But typically, at town meeting, there are a number of senior citizens who might live at Newbury Court or at Concord Park, or one of the various facilities in town, who are active members of town meeting. Many of those facilities would not allow those folks back in if they left for an event. There's a, there's a quarantining order in many, many senior facilities. So I'm wondering how that fits in with anything other than a postponement, and, and how that gets calculated with a date.
Well, Jane, I think that that's really the same issue as the governor's safer-at-home advisory for people over sixty-five to remain quarantined except for essential activities. Although I will say that, that the governor's order specifically doesn't apply to municipal legislatures. So, but, but, but public health reasons are the same. You know, they're the same. It's not as if they don't apply to us. But it's a separation of powers issue with the governor not telling town meetings what to do. But I think, I was recently part of a working group in the Mass Moderators Association. We put together a planning guide for town meetings in the midst of the COVID, COVID emergency. And the balance that I think moderators need to, to strike is between public safety and legitimacy of the meeting. And Jane, I think one of the factors would be if there is a serious disenfranchisement of a segment of our voters who feel that they have to choose between their health or their participation in open town meeting. And while personal choices will be made when we're in a reasonable period of risk, if we're still under a regime where everybody over sixty-five is being told to stay at home, or everybody who is on immunosuppressing drugs or various other kinds of things, it's, it's, it's easy to see the justification for postponing the meeting. I think those towns that are moving forward with their meetings are finding that the exigencies of their own budgeting issues or other compelling products, articles, for example. of their own budgeting issues or other compelling products, articles, for example, communities where the flood insurance is going to expire if they don't approve the FEMA plan. And you know, so other towns that are holding their meetings are condensing their warrants as much as they possibly can. Towns that have never used a consent calendar are using them. People are postponing articles or warrants that haven't been posted yet are being stripped down to the bare minimum so that the meeting can be as short and as to the point as possible. So we're in the position of being able to proceed on a 1/12 basis. I think the only thing we have that's really unfortunate in not having a town meeting is that our senior means tested property tax exclusion will expire. And we don't, you know, if we aren't holding town meeting to reauthorize that with the legislature, then that is going to expire. So, but really everything else, we're able to manage until September.
Carmen, if you, if you would contemplate issuing another declaration, you could do it after June 1, which would get us into July. Is that correct?
Yes. And actually, with the statutory changes, Mike, that were made in the midst of the pandemic, the 30 days, I still can only move things in 30 day increments, but the 30 days doesn't run from the original, it, it doesn't run from the date of the declaration. It runs from the date of the meeting. So right now, I'm working with June 29 as the date of the meeting. So I can move it to July 29.
Okay. Well, I guess, I'll just speak, I guess I would encourage you to do that so that the town could, if Kerry is going to come back to us with this 112 spending plan to be approved, that earlier that day or anytime that's convenient to you, you would make that declaration. That would, that would allow us to get this budget submitted. And since you've already indicated that your intent is to move this until September, I don't really see that there's much of an issue.
Right. There isn't, except that because this is a very fluid situation, it's unlikely, but possible that my authority under Section 10A could be circumscribed by the governor lifting the state of emergency wholly, which would mean I'd only have 30 days after that date within which to reschedule the meeting. So if the governor were, for example, on July 1 to lift the state of emergency totally, then we would have to have our meeting by August 1. So we just don't know what, what will happen there. Probably that won't happen. We're probably going to have some kind of partial state of emergency for quite a while. But we, that is some uncertain territory.
And it is the case that if you were somewhere in the future and you had indicated that August 29 was going to be the annual town meeting, and he lifted it in the middle of July, even though we had a scheduled meeting, we would be forced to retreat to a, when inside of 30 days?
No, we'd be fine with whatever date we had scheduled it to.
So as if we hadn't scheduled it, then we'd have to do it.
Yeah.
So, okay. So I would, I would suggest that we try to move in that direction. How do other board members feel?
Certainly makes sense, given Kerry's some deadlines and what she needs to work with.
I agree.
I agree also. And I want to make one comment that since you brought up other towns coming, I've learned that Minuteman Tech School will also be submitting a 112 budget. However, most of their towns are going to meet. Probably all of them, except for Concord. So by the time we have town meeting, it's conceivable that the two thirds of the towns will have approved their budget, their, their regular annual budget. So that's just a comment and we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Well, let me ask if Terry, if Minuteman is going to submit a 112 budget, does that have to be approved by the select board of all of the member towns?
No. No, it doesn't.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, Stephen?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch, to touch on that because I, and Carmen did an excellent job kind of explaining it, but I just want to reinforce the idea that the decision on, on Concord's town meeting was based on Concord's warrant and public health and Concord, you know, the Concord's town meeting expectations of enfranchisement and also presentations and things like that. I know there are a number of communities moving forward, as Carmen articulated, for a variety of reasons. Each community has to kind of make the decisions based on what's on their warrants. You know, there may be capital plans that are necessary. We're just fortunate that, I mean, all the work we're proposing, the warrant is needed, but some, but not so time sensitive that if we don't do it, if we don't start it, there'll be a crisis. So we're fortunate to be in that position because then we can do the 112 budget and give town meeting voters at least a chance to, to be a part of it. But again, with all the unknowns, we hope that by the time September rolls around, we'll be able to do it, you know, all together in, in a room and give presentations like we normally do. But there's no guarantees of that either. So at least this, by pushing it off, at least gives us a, a chance to at least try for that.
If I, if I may, Mike, I agree. I didn't mean to imply otherwise. I, I think we made the right decision for Concord. I just wanted to give some information what was happening with Minuteman.
Mike, if I just might add, one other caveat is, I, I think that the Department of Revenue has made clear that financial uncertainty, not a reason not to have a town meeting and not a reason to not pass a budget. And now the Department of Revenue, of course, is not in charge of whether people have their town meetings or not, but they have made it clear in response to direct questions that anybody that does hold a town meeting has to enact a budget. You can't, and Kerry talked about that earlier. You, you don't have authority under the statute to look for a 112 budget if you've held a town meeting before June 30. So there'll, there'll be some point at which that I would expect to see pressure from the state to hold a town meeting. But I, I think it's going to be a while before we see that.
Well, and I would just comment that, you know, the state's budget is, you know, we keep getting word that it's pretty far off when we're going to get our, our new revised budget numbers. And so I, while I respect the comments of DOR, the, the financial uncertainty is, I think, great at this point with the state's, with the state's estimates, which does have a meaningful impact on both the town and the school budget. So I, we hadn't really talked in great depth about that, but that's on top of all the other reasons we've articulated, the, the lack of state bu, state budget numbers. If we're able to have them when we meet, hopefully in September, we can do the budget once and not have to go back and either make additions or subtractions based on whatever the state finally puts forward.
All right. All right. Well, thank you all. We'll look forward to continuing discussion next week. The next item on our agenda is committee liaison reports. I don't know if any of you know Susan, you're, why don't you start?
Okay. The planning board met on Tuesday, but it was a very short meeting and there was nothing controversial. It was, it was a couple of items in minutes and it was over in half an hour. So that was pretty straightforward. As Stephen mentioned, Economic Vitality Committee met yesterday. And in the grant that he mentioned that Marsha is shepherding through for Concord, as I understand it, includes assistance for micro enterprises, which are businesses with five or less employees. And the award could be up to, not to exceed $10,000. So they're doing research on how many businesses in town that might apply to in order to come up with a number to ask for. The other thing that came up that I didn't know, and I thought it was interesting, someone mentioned, I think it was one of the co-chairs, talking about how to support businesses, mentioned that the community chest has a fund that people can donate to that supports businesses. I, I haven't had a chance to check their site to look at that, but I was interested to hear that, that opportunity for individuals to make donations. The other item is, it wasn't a meeting, but the draft feasibility and schematic design report has, was issued Tuesday, I think, or sent to the members of the school building committee. And we have till June 1 to review and make comments. And they said it's about four, it's about 400 pages, but a lot of the appendices and charts are things that we've seen in past meetings. So there's a, you know, it's a tight timeframe, but we all, we were all giving a heads up that that would be the case. And that's it for me.
Do any of the other members have liaison to, yes, Jane, and then Terry?
I gave an early liaison report last week on the NAGO situation. And both the HGC, the Storks District Commission and the NRC continue to hear, hear, hear the, you know, hear scheduled licensing, but there's nothing of a major note there other than some sort of personal interest stories, which are my interests. But I will mention that on the Board of Health, which we, I think most of us have been following the Board of Health fairly closely, but on a separate note, Concord is now part of a new tobacco control collaborative coordinated by the town of Wilmington. And the collaborative includes Lexington and Bedford, which means we're going to get a tobacco control compliance inspector who will work in all four of the towns. This really increases the amount of inspections we'll be, we'll be hosting or we'll be, we'll be having, which I believe prior to this were one or two a year. And I think that's probably good news, given many of the things that the Board of Health was working on prior to COVID.
Thank you. Terry?
So the capital planning task force, I've been, we haven't met, but we've corresponded a little bit about scheduling. And I mean, one of the things is the public hearing that we were supposed to have was set for March 18. So it was one of the first things canceled from the pandemic. And I think it would be good to have that public hearing in September, even if we have to have it by Zoom. If, if we can do it in person, so much the better. But our charge from the select board will expire, I believe it's June 15. So we need to, again, get an extension. And well, Mike and I were talking a little, and it seems like instead of extending and extending, because we don't know what's going on, maybe we should just extend for another year to June 15 of 2021. Because for heaven's sakes, we should be finished by then. All we need to do is have the public hearing and then have another six or eight weeks, write the report and present it to the select board. So I guess I will probably be back next meeting to ask for an extension to the charge. And I wanted to get your thoughts, if anybody has any thoughts, before I write Mike an email about that.
So Terry, I would just ask one question about, you're proposing that the public hearing should occur in September. Is there a reason, if in fact we'd go ahead with town meeting, we're going to be busy, is there a reason that, do you need to have the public hearing before the town meeting?
No, 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 not at all. It could, that, that was something we talked about a, a month or two ago. It could be October, for example.
Okay.
Want to do it in the summer when people are away, when we know for sure, pretty sure we can't have it in person. And this is, it's a good point, Linda. It's why we think we should extend for a year because we don't know when we're going to have this public hearing.
Well, I suppose we could, so we'll get this on our agenda for next week, as Terry and I talked about. I think we could probably craft an extension similar to the ones we did last time. And that is, you've said, Terry, that following the public hearing, you guys would need maybe eight weeks, you know, so we could craft it to extend their charge to eight weeks following when they are allowed to schedule a public hearing. I don't know whether we can get away with that or not, we could ask, but that way we just wait. And when you can have your public hearing, you have it. And then you take the time to do your report. So why don't you chat with the leadership of the committee and see if they've got a point of view. And Jeremy, through this, I'll ask you to get that item also on our agenda for next, our next meeting. Linda, did you have anything?
Yes, I have a few other quick items. So I attended by Zoom my first MBTA meeting. It was interesting. There were dozens and dozens of people there. The main thing that I took away was several of us made comments because the commuter rail is not, they're not planning to restore it to full schedule. They don't have any plan right now to do that. So eventually they will. But there were several of us, a lot of people from the South Shore, the representative from Acton and I, and we all asked for full restoration as soon as they can possibly do that. I also attended with Jane, a Zoom National Grid meeting with that group of towns that we've been going to with our public works people. And not a lot came out of that meeting. National Grid just basically talked about that workers are at home and they haven't been able to get back to working with us yet. So that was kind of a disappointment, but that did. And then I, the cultural council, the local cultural council, we heard from the Umbra, the museum, and 51 Wald and several others about how they're trying to figure out how to reopen. And they've been trying to operate online. And they have a $5,000 grant from the Mass Cultural Council that they have to repurpose now because it was going to be a film festival. So they have a number of ideas, even a drive-in that they might do at the high school, which might be kind of cool. So they've been talking about what to do with this $5,000 because they have to figure it out and encumber the money by June 30. So it's a real looming deadline. And then the library met last night and I wasn't able to attend, but I got a synopsis from Kerry Cronin. And they're hoping to do curbside delivery starting around June 8. And I guess, Stephen, you're going to be at one of their upcoming meetings to discuss how to open totally. And the other news was that for the expansion project, they've reached agreement with the litigants. They're planning to go back to the HGC for some modifications.
All right. Thank you. Linda?
So I met with the zoning Board of Appeals. They had a number of items on their agenda. I would just point out that the proposed development next to River Walk for 1651 through 1650 next to River Walk for 1651 through 1657 Main Street was, made their first preliminary presentation that evening, and they're proposing development of 14 units there. The other thing that I would comment on is that I attended Concord Recreation Commission meeting yesterday. They have really faced some, as an enterprise entity in town, they have faced some pretty steep challenges in terms of having accepted applications for various programs and having to refund or making a decision to refund the families, keep them engaged, then reopening applications for summer and fall, even in this climate of uncertainty, not knowing whether they're gonna be in the position, what position they'll be in again to meet the need. And also facing some people who had, as a placeholder, submitted applications, whether it be for camp or the fall program. And there's some early indication that some of the people are pulling out at this point. Again, probably families weighing what the environment is and whether or not they're ready to proceed. So, I have to say that the rec department has really had a huge task on their hands. They are almost totally dependent on fees that come in from, you know, the various camp applications and rec department applications, et cetera. So, this is a tough budgeting, balancing act for them as well.
Indeed. All right, just, I think I should have indicated also when we were having our town meeting update that with Carmen making a declaration, we need to have on our agenda for next week as well, we have to reauthorize the Public Health Director to write to the Attorney General about the town moderator's declaration. So, we'll do that. And if she comes back to us next week with a further declaration, we'll just have to do it again. So, Jeremy, I put that also on our agenda. Miss? Go ahead.
May I just add that there may have been some committee appointments that have happened during the last couple of months that may or may not have made our agendas, whether they're town manager appointments or otherwise. So, I think we need to get caught up with that. There's a comment also directed to Jeremy to sort of review that and get that on our agenda.
You might recall, Linda, and it's a good question, you might recall that we amended at Carmen's, in conversation with Carmen, we amended 810 to extend the terms of all committee members until the end of town meeting.
True. But I ran into a situation this week where was a new member on a committee filling an interim appointment. And so, there may be other situations like that that we need to get on the agenda.
All right, all right, let's make sure we do the miscellaneous correspondence. I don't have anything to report. And then, public comments. So, Carlin, it looks like your hand is up and you're muted. No, you're not.
Now, I'm unmuted, thank you, Mike. Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End, but speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters, this is about the candidate forums. Thank you, Stephen, for getting the Select Board candidates posted so quickly to the town's website. The League has now also posted that to the League's website and to the League's Facebook page. Now, the second candidate forum, which deals with the school committee, will be held on Friday from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. Again, we follow, we expect to follow the same posting procedures up on the town's website and then also on the League's website and Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Seeing no other hands, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move?
Is there a second?
Second.
The clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ochus?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escobedo, aye.
Thank you all very much for attending and stay well.